So I'm calling this city council meeting to order. Uh, this is the county city council meeting here for Tuesday, February the eighteenth, two thousand and twenty. Uh, I'm going to give the invocation and we'll have the pledge of allegiance of council member Tommy's Harvey. Please stand.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day that you've given us and for each person who is at this city council meeting today. Well, we thank you for all the blessings that you have bestowed on our community. We pray, Lord, for all those affected by floods in the south, Lord, that you just help them deal with the the rising waters. Well, we pray for wisdom for our nation and our state and for us in this city council meeting today. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Please join me in our pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the reprieve of justice.
I would like to ask you to silence your phones right now.
You made it.
Uh, roll call.
Mr. Montgomery?
Here.
Mr. Larkin?
Here.
Mr. Darby?
Here.
Mr. Irwin?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Free?
Here.
Mr. Harvey?
Here.
All present?
Okay, we need to approve the minutes of the February fourth, two thousand and twenty regularly meeting and dispense with the reading.
So move.
Second. We've got a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Council, please cast your vote. Carries. Uh, no add-ons?
No, sir, we have no add-ons today.
Okay, under ceremonial matters, Rebecca Bonavere, the general manager, ASM Global of CenturyLink is going to give us an update.
Approve the agenda.
What's that? Oh, we need to approve the, I'm sorry, I need a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Second. Got a motion and a second. Comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Council, cast your vote. Thank you, Jeff. Got that taken care of. Rebecca, welcome. Thank you for coming.
I want to thank the city council and city leadership and everybody from the public that came today for an opportunity to give you an update about CenturyLink Center. So I have a PowerPoint presentation I wanted to run through pretty quickly, an annual update for the year we just completed, two thousand and nineteen. So we're going to talk about our successes, challenges, financials, and the impact as well as the outlook. One of the things I wanted to bring to your attention first of all is that SMG was the name of the company that has been managing the venue for twenty years. We recently merged with a company called AEG Facilities and created a new company called ASM Global. And I was going to give a quick video, sizzle reel, about the company.
Imagine an opportunity greater than each of us alone. Bringing together our dreams with unrivaled expertise to deliver unforgettable experiences. Imagine bringing knowledge, prosperity, and goosebumps to a global stage. Imagine starting the day with what if and ending the day with what's next. With innovation to create the unimaginable, transforming the mundane into magic, filling an empty stadium, arena, theater, or convention hall with a world of possibilities. Imagine finding passion and purpose, doing what's right, not what's easy, aspiring to move from the pendulum to wow. Imagine connecting the world through heartbeats, high fives, and handshakes, changing the course of a life live, enabling a lifetime memory, a favorite set, a last pitch, another sale booked. Imagine being part of a creative engine, helping communities thrive, using the power of our global reach and local know-how, from Stockholm to Sydney, striving to move the world forward, one person, one group, one event, one experience at a time. Imagine what we can do together.
So that is our sizzle reel for ASM Global. There's a lot of benefits with our company now being ASM Global. We're the world's leading venue management company here in Bossier City to serve you. With over three hundred facilities operating on five continents throughout the world, we manage two point seven million seats, sixty-one thousand employees. The expertise and resources that can be deployed for venue support, which we often have people come from other venues to help us with large, significant events, and an enhanced ability to drive revenues through live continent, which would be booking. For two thousand and nineteen, we've already seen an impact with our diversity and programming that this is, it's kind of consistent through the years, but the number of events have gone up. Largely, we, is our concerts that we do every year. We do a lot of community events. We're growing our, our booking and our banquet events and as well as other events, too. So it just kind of shows a little bit of a growth there. Sharing some of the successes of two thousand and nineteen would be our sporting events, including the LHSAA Wrestling Championship last year. We hosted it this weekend as well. Olympic Trials for Women's Volleyball, which was internationally televised. Tough Heat'em and Bull Riding, Monster Trucks is some examples. Religious events, Hillsong United, Winter Jam, and Mercy Me are all concerts that we were able to host, as well as some conventions, including the Jehovah's Witness, the Word of God Aleph Tav Convention, and simple church events. Country shows, one of the largest types of shows that we do are country shows, that we sell a ton of tickets. This past year, we had sold-out shows with Kane Brown, Luke Combs, and Chris Stapleton. Other significant country shows were Miranda Lambert, Alan Jackson, Alabama, and Old Dominion. Community events, we're increasing the number of community events that we've been doing. We did the Council on Alcohol and Drug Abuse Annual Dinner, featuring Danny Trejo. The Feis-Wilers Lifesavers Ball. We did three Bossier Chamber events this past year, dance recital, a number of graduations, and hosted Barkus and Meow Parade. Rock shows for two thousand and nineteen, we had Kiss, Farewell, which I don't know how many times they'll be saying goodbye, but, uh, so farewell. Bob Seeger, which was an unbelievable show, Pink, and then the R and B shows, including Super Jam and the Millennium Tour. Comedy show, we did Tyler Perry's Medea Farewell Tour, which was pretty close to being sold out. It was sold out over across the river and they moved it to our buildings to increase capacity. And a spectacle show, which was the Cirque du Soleil Corteo Show, which was an incredible performance. Political events, we hosted our current president, Donald Trump, for a political event for a
Rebecca, could you do one of those for adults?
Absolutely.
I think I'd like that.
near-sold-out capacity. It was a whole lot of fun. It wasn't a huge revenue generator, but it was something where we did generate a little Family shows, we had Paw Patrol, and we actually also created our own show, which was called bit of a profit, and it, in essence, was like, perhaps you're familiar with the game Candyville. It was something we completely created on our own. And I was going to show a quick video, or at least part of it, to show you a little Candyland. It was similar to that, where people became life-size pieces in the game and got to do bit about what Candyville was.
It looks like there are lots of great things to do there in Candyville.
arts and crafts and eat things and perform, and it was just a whole lot of fun. So we are actually expanding it, doing additional days of it, having school shows where kids could come in, entire classrooms could come in. So that's something that we look to do as we move to the future. It's also something that the Tourism Bureau and the city has helped us with, to be able to create it with some funding from the Tourism Bureau. So that was very successful.
You know, David always dresses up like that. He has those costumes.
He can be an elf next year, the MC.
Anything, if I could just participate.
Yeah, okay. Some challenges for two thousand and nineteen, some challenges presented themselves, but we've been able to overcome them. Some of it is risk in doing shows. If it was easy, everybody'd be doing it. So there are, there is a lot of risk that you could lose money by doing shows, but we've been able to minimize that through partnerships with our promoters. The challenges of the routing and availability, you know, managing our calendar, I try to really keep weekends open for large concert events, and when we do smaller shows or catering events, we try to keep them midweek to maximize our calendar's date in revenues. Who's touring? It depends on who's touring, how many nights they want to work, what region, if they're even going to be in the United States, or if they're just over across seas. Types of venues, an example might be last year, I worked really hard to try to get a Lauren Daigle event. She's a Christian performer, and they just wouldn't talk to me, and they wanted to do theaters, and so they went into theaters and sold out in about ten minutes. And now we have Lauren Daigle coming to our arena this year, and already have over ten thousand tickets sold. And competition, I'm just really having to negotiate aggressive deals in order to make sure that we're getting the show in our market versus another market in the area. Other challenges, and some of these things are, that, things we can't really control, but we work around them, cost of utilities, cost of goods, cost of, cost of healthcare. Some of the things that could be out of our control would be a natural disaster or some kind of a security crisis, which we've been lucky to not have immediately in, at this time. Another thing is sometimes business is just cyclical. So we've been really blessed to have a strong two thousand and nineteen as well as a coming two thousand and twenty. So for two thousand and nineteen, we have our best financial year in ten years. So I kind of threw up there our net loss, actually, but in two thousand and nineteen, we had our smallest loss ever. Looking for two thousand and twenty, I always try for at least a break even, and I think that we might do it in two thousand and twenty. Financials are specific here compared to last year. Our attendance is up greatly, by about seventy-five thousand people. Attendance days are up, or, excuse me, event days are up. Gross revenues are up. Expenses are up slightly, but that's to be expected with more events, and the bottom line is, is that we've improved over last year by three hundred and eight thousand dollars. Two thousand and nineteen, we also had excellent customer satisfaction. After every event, we survey our guests. On a scale of one to ten, one being low, ten being high, the first category there is our overall performance of an eight point five. Eight point oh is about industry standard. We do seventy-five facilities where we do the same survey, and if you'll notice, where the green and blue are, the first two categories, Arrival and Security, our venue had the top scores of all seventy-five venues. The others, Staffing, Environment, Tech, and Food and Beverage, we are above average. The one challenge we have is with departure. That's basically because when people leave, they can only go out two ways, on CenturyLink Center Drive or the Parkway. It presents a little bit of a challenge, and it's sometimes slow to empty out the parking lot, but we've been working with Bossier City Police, who have been incredible. And we're also just put together a plan for ride share, a ride share area, where we're starting to see a lot of Uber, you know, pickups and drop-offs. So we're creating a new area so that we can streamline that and make other cars get out more quickly. So we are working on ways to increase that performance as well. Economic impact, each show that we do has a great economic impact. One in particular we did this year was with Bob Seeger. That show presented a little bit of a challenge. They gave us some pushback and, unless we worked out some fee payment with them, and we were able to have ASM Global invest twenty-nine thousand dollars in order for us to secure that show. The Tourism Bureau was kind enough to do an economic impact study on that, and it generated well over eight hundred thousand dollars in an economic impact, which was great. So we're thankful for that. Another example of economic impact for the volleyball Olympic qualifiers, the women's team, that event, which was, again, televised internationally, generated nearly one point four million dollars in economic impact. And then an event that we do every year, with Jehovah's Witness also supported by the Tourism Bureau, over four years, they have an economic impact of about twenty-three million, so about five and a half million dollars economic impact every year. One of the positive things of two thousand and nineteen, our suites are at a hundred percent capacity, and we have nine companies on the waiting list. It's not a bogus waiting list, it's a real waiting list. As a matter of fact, we had a suite come open about two weeks ago, and, and our director was able to close the sale on the new, new lease agreement within two days, because we had such a solid waiting list. For two thousand and nineteen, the gross ticket revenues, now that's revenues that the promoters take, but it's a, it's revenue that we pay taxes on, and we paid eight hundred and, almost eight hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars in taxes. And restoration fees, which are the fees that we pay back the city for the capital improvement investments that you all did for us through that ordinance, we were able to pay back nearly four hundred and forty-five thousand dollars for the bond. So talking about restoration fee, we had an amazing year, and I want to thank you so much for the support that you've given us by allocating these capital improvement funds. There's so many new things and great things. Many of you attended our fam tour last year, but we have a new LED marquee out front. We were able to deep clean the interior and exterior of the venue, new capstones on our landscaping, a new roof. Our parking lot was resealed and striped. We have new storage, security gates, new VIP entrance area, new front row bar, which is something that, it's a new bar area that we never had before, and it's now one of our strongest points of sale in the entire arena. And that was by repurposing space that we had. Refreshed concourse and restrooms, additional cameras and security measures. We were able to get the magnetometers handheld and walkthrough to keep everybody safe. New stages, rails, tables, different, different things like that. Cash registers, more of them, so we could make the lines go quickly. New seating, new backstage bayou, which is a cool meeting area that we've been able to book with additional events. New kitchen equipment and concessions equipment, improved heating, ventilation, and air conditioning, and other new food and beverage areas. So those are a lot of things that we were able to do thus far with the capital improvements that you've made available to us. Another thing for two thousand and nineteen, which was a great success and a great partnership, is our box office naming rights with B One Bank. It's been a win-win situation for, for the arena and for the bank as well, so we're proud of that. And as we look to the future, we see increased bookings. I already have more, not I, I'm sorry. We have more bookings so far for two thousand and twenty than this past year, and they're quality, strong bookings. We're very carefully monitoring our expenses. I personally look at every purchase order, I sign every single check, and we have more capital improvements. We've been very prudent with the expenses that we've had so far with the capital improvements, and that just means more things that can be done with that money to make a better experience for everybody that comes. Another thing for two thousand and twenty, as we look to the future, is a new name. We've had a wonderful run with CenturyLink for twenty years. They've been an incredible partner, but as you know, they have some different marketing strategies in their future, and so we are working to get a new naming rights partner. Right now, I have several businesses that are interested locally and nationally, and we had done an, an analysis on the value of naming rights for our venue, and we believe that the value is well over three point five million dollars annually for our partner. And so we'll use that to our benefit as we negotiate our new contract, and we, like I said, we have some really heavy hitters that we've been pretty far into discussions with, so I think our outlook is very, very bright there. So I want to thank you for your time. I want to thank you for allowing ASM Global, and for me in particular, to be able to serve you. It is such a pleasure, and want to just thank you and ask if you have any questions.
I do, uh, you know, we've been down at touring a lot, you know, Rebecca, and it's, you know, the improvements that you've made, it's, has been great, you know, it looks, the whole arena looks brand new. Uh, you know, we had the wrestling matches this last weekend. It's, it's, this is our fourth year in a row. We had it two years previous to that.
Yes, sir.
So that thing always goes over good. Clay's on the Newport Bossier Sports Commission with me, and, uh, you know, that's one event we need to keep going after. You keep hearing different things that, yeah, we're going back to Baton Rouge, down south again, but we're going to keep bidding on it?
Yes, sir. And we just, we announced, the mayor was able to help us in announcing our LSU basketball game versus Louisiana Tech. So sporting events are especially important to us, and really, I mean, we want to provide entertainment and quality of life for our people that live here, but we also want to generate revenue for our whole area by having overnight guests come in and pulling people in for those tournaments, and like the volleyball event and things like that.
And it's great, like I said, it's great for the Newport Bossier Sports Commission to work with you. I mean, it just makes it easy to book events, you know.
The, the sports commission and the Tourism Bureau have been incredible partners and great people to work with, and everybody's, you know, we all work together, and so I'm very, very thankful for that.
I just want to thank you and your staff and Kelly. Now Kelly and his staff, they do, y'all do a great job. And that's why they keep coming back, you know.
Yes, sir.
Y'all got it down to a, to a science. You know, I know this year you had a little move, move something on Friday afternoon with some things going on down there, but it all got done and got, you know, so-
Everybody works together.
That's right. I appreciate that.
It's all about serving people, and if we're not serving people, we're not doing our job. So we need to make every experience a memorable experience.
I just want to thank you, Rebecca.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any questions? Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Rebecca. I agree that Trilly is a world-class facility, and appreciate your passion and your expertise in managing that facility. Under committee reports, Stacy Fernandez, our city finance director, is giving our monthly financial report.
Good afternoon, council. I've distributed the financial statements for January of two thousand and twenty. January's always a little hard, because we're still trying to close the year, but if you look at page one, our revenue by fund is a hundred and thirty-five percent, and the portion of that that is Bossier sales tax collections is a hundred and four percent. Page two are expenses by fund, and we're at eighty-six percent. Page three are our sales taxes, and we are above prior year by point nine percent, or forty-seven thousand dollars. Page four is our manning report. We're currently at six hundred and seventy-two employees, compared to last month's six seventy-six, so we're down four, and we're twenty-six below budget. Finally, page five are utilities. January's always tough, because we have a lot of service contracts that get renewed in January, so we're at thirty-seven percent to same-time prior year, but that's going to level off as the year goes by. We're at two hundred and fifty-three percent to budget, and the rolling twelve months is thirty-nine percent. Do you have any questions?
Any questions, council? Thank you, Stacy.
Thank you.
And continuing our committee reports, Gordon Mosley, Assistant City Attorney, is going to give our monthly property report. Welcome, Gordon.
Good afternoon, councilman.
Good afternoon.
Um, I'm going to go over the couple of property acquisitions that have changed since the last time we met. First is the Walto Bigby Carriage Way. We did close on a property related to Mr. Joseph Young. It's a, I'm trying to, it's on the tip right here, and we, we finally closed on that. Moving to the north side, Green Acres Office Park has signed, signed the acquisition for that portion. We have to pick that up, and I'll get the mayor to sign that as soon as we can and get it recorded.
What's the other one that, Gordon, the other red one right there?
Uh, that's Moore and Nichols.
Oh, okay.
On the Melrose Plantation Projects, we've closed now all of these except one. We, we still have, it's called, it's a holding company, Coleview Portfolio, but as you can see by all the green, we've now acquired all of that, except for that one remaining property. Moving on to Coleman Street, we're still waiting on the right-of-way plans to be approved by DOTD. We've been told as of now, it's to expect them March or April. We did have Dapper Holdings dedicate this permanent and temporary servitude right here, so we have now, we have that signed, and we just need to record it now for us to officially own it. But again, we're waiting on DOTD, March, April, we're expecting before we can start acquiring the rest of the red properties. Viking Drive's not in there. I don't know, I must have not included it by accident, but Viking Drive, the right-of-way and appraisal plans have been approved. I talked to Melissa Labas today. She is our DOTD project manager, and she said that she expects it to be about a month before we get official DOTD approval to move forward with the property acquisitions and to get a federal ID number for the project. On the old Menden Road Utility Project, we have acquired now this property. It's a nineteen thirty-five airline is the holding company, and we're still closing out this one. And then lastly, this East Texas Temporary Easement, we're still in negotiations with the property owner to close out that one property. That's just a temporary construction servitude, and, and that's all I have at this point. Do y'all have any questions?
Counsel, any questions? Thank you, Gordon.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Good to see the progress. Let's move on to unfinished business.
Adopt an ordinance requiring a reduction in residential speed on Waller Avenue, Bossier City, Louisiana, from thirty miles per hour to twenty-five miles per hour.
So move. Second.
So we've got a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Any questions from the council? Council, please cast your vote. So the motion carries.
Adopt an ordinance to purchase asset management software, which will include onsite professional services for configuration and setup to ensure success within the lift station division at a cost of twenty-five thousand dollars, to come from the sewer capital contingency fund. Final reading.
So move. Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Council, any questions? Please cast your vote. Carries.
Adopt an ordinance to accept the dedication into the city street system, the streets within Plantation Trace Garden Homes, Unit Number One and Unit Number Two. Final reading.
So move. Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Council, any questions? Please cast your vote. Carries.
Adopt an ordinance to accept the dedication into the city street system, the streets within Plantation Trace Garden Homes, Unit Number One and Unit Number Two. Final reading.
So move. Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Any questions from the council? Council, please cast your vote. Motion carries.
Adopt an ordinance appropriating six hundred and twenty thousand dollars from the land acquisition fund to purchase thirty acres of property contiguous to the Bossier City Water Plant from the North Bossier Development Company, eleven hundred LLC, and authorizing Mayor Lorenz Walker to execute any and all documents in conjunction herewith. Final reading.
So move. Second.
Council, please cast your vote. So the motion carries.
Adopt an ordinance to purchase asset management software, which will include onsite professional services for configuration and setup to ensure success within the lift station division at a cost of $25,000 to come from the sewer capital contingency fund. Final reading.
So moved. Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Any questions from the council? Council, please cast your vote. Motion carries.
Adopt an ordinance to authorize the mayor to sign a street abandonment plat, to abandon a small portion of Monica Street. Final reading.
So moved. Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Council, any questions? Please cast your vote. Carries.
Adopt an ordinance to accept the dedication into the city street system, the streets within Plantation Trace Garden Homes, Unit Number One and Unit Number Two. Final reading.
So moved. Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Any questions from the council? Council, please cast your vote. Motion carries.
Adopt an ordinance appropriating $620,000 from the land acquisition fund to purchase 30 acres of property contiguous to the Bojor City Water Plant from the North Bojor Development Company, 1100 LLC, and authorizing Mayor Lorenz Walker to execute any and all documents in conjunction therewith. Final reading.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Any questions from the council? Please cast your vote. Motion carries.
Adopt a supplemental bond ordinance authorizing the issuance of not exceeding $8 million of taxable utilities revenue bonds, Series 2020, of the City of Bojor City, State of Louisiana, in accordance with the terms of the general bond ordinance adopted on July 6, 2010, prescribing the form and certain terms and conditions of said bonds and providing for other matters in connection therewith. Final reading.
So moved. Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Any questions from the council? Please cast your vote. So the motion carries. We'll move on to new business.
Public hearing in reference to objection filed by Wayne Hoag, Primo concessions protesting the proposed ordinance regarding the surplus declaration and rental of the Bojor City Civic Center.
Okay, this is a public hearing. I will open this just to review some basic guidelines. Feel free to make your comments. You are to address the president of, of the council. And then after we receive the comments, I'll ask the council if they have, have any comments they would like to make. And following that, we'll close the public hearing. So would anyone like to speak on this item number one? Please state your name and your address, and welcome. Thank you for coming today.
Thank you. My name is Wayne Hoag, 231 Columbia Street, Streetport. My wife and I were owners of Primo Gilado Cafe in Streetport during 2017. Late in 2017, we asked about providing concession services for the Bojor Civic Center as their concession provider was leaving. We created Bayou Concessions, now called Primo Concessions, specifically to provide concession services for Bojor Civic Center. We soon became a part of the fabric of the day-to-day workings of the Civic Center and were intricately involved in most activities, events, meetings, and shows. We made the Civic Center a more vibrant place, improved the shows and events there by enhancing attendees' experience. Our goal was to make the concession more like a cafe than a concession stand, and we did that extremely well. We even began producing our own line of foods, snacks, and confections, making the menu unique and even more special. We continuously purchased more and better equipment to help make our service even more outstanding and had even bought several hundred dollars in equipment over the last two months to continue improving. The Civic Center meant a lot to us because we had to close the cafe in December of 2018. And having the Civic Center to keep our focus on was a godsend. It's tough emotionally, physically, and financially to close a business that we had put so much into. Having the Civic Center softened the blow tremendously, and it gave my wife and I something to focus on. She and I usually ran the concession stand ourselves, so it gave us a shared purpose, and we loved doing it. Initially, we were given a standard 12-month contract beginning the 1st of January of 2018. We provided such excellent services for the full year that a new contract was automatically issued for 2019. Before the end of 2019, the city council was apparently discussing alternative use for the Civic Center, such as selling or leasing the facility. So our contract was not automatically renewed pending resolution of this council's activities so as not to have the facility locked into any long-term contracts. The council left all of the employees, users, and thousands of stakeholders, including us, in the dark as to their plans for most of the year. We went from day-to-day and week-to-week wondering what was going to happen. We were given very little information during this time. It was an agonizing time for the Civic Center employees and show planners. Initially, show planners and meeting planners were not given the option of contracting events over a month or two ahead of time, which is devastating for shows or events that advertise or plan for months or year, a year ahead of time. It was a time of significant anxiety, stress, helplessness, and fear for every stakeholder because we never knew what was about to happen. And it went on for months. The council did whatever you did in secrecy, not including any of the stakeholders in the process or discussion. Entering 2020, even without a written contract, we continued to abide by all terms and conditions of the old contract. And through our own good faith, we provided exceptional concession services to keep the Civic Center a premier event and meeting operation. We also kept all of our business insurance, taxes, licenses, and other business requirements current. We were asked by the operations manager and show and event planners to continue doing concessions. And, and the operations manager continued to send requests for events that needed concessions, no different than when we had a written contract. We wanted to continue providing concession services out of our own goodwill and caring for the Civic Center and the events held there. We had even purchased several hundred dollars in new equipment during December and January to continue enhancing our services because we were committed to continuing to do good work in good faith and fully expected everything to work out. Then in January 2020, the council finally put an ordinance on the agenda to put the Civic Center up for lease and declared a surplus and no longer needed for city use. For much of the year, the council worked behind closed doors to formulate the plan with no apparent input from any of the affected stakeholders or users of the facility. So I decided that I should step up and speak for the unrepresented people impacted by the council's decision. In the absence of any information, I felt somebody had to get involved to get pertinent information released to the public. The day the ordinance was put on the agenda, January 28th, I attended the first city council meeting in my life and spoke to the council against the ordinance citing millions of dollars of economic impact directly attributable to the Civic Center and the thousands of stakeholders that deserve consideration. Then the day before the council was to vote on the ordinance on February 4, guided by the instructions in the ordinance, I filed an objection to the ordinance with the city attorney's office. My stated goal in the objection was that I was speaking up on behalf of the thousands of stakeholders in the Civic Center and the citizens who benefit from the Civic Center and the millions of dollars of economic impact it has on the community. I fully believed I was doing no more than my civic duty, participating in the process of local government and exercising my First Amendment rights. I had no ill will towards the council and even stated so in the objection, and fully hoped to just offer an alternative plan that would give the council what you wanted and protect the economic impact and the thousands of stakeholders. My objection to the ordinance resulted in this hearing today. On the morning of Friday, February 7th, I was at the Civic Center concession stand preparing for a Cyber Innovation Center robotics competition with over 1,200 expected to attend the following morning, and a simple church function scheduled for Sunday night, the night, with over 1,800 expected to attend, when CAO Pam Glorioso came into the Civic Center and told me that a city councilman had just visited the mayor's office and told them he wanted me out of the Civic Center immediately. He had requested the file containing the last contract and an out-of-date insurance certificate the day before, so he was obviously looking for a reason to attack us. He cited those would be the two reasons to fire us on the spot. Later that day, I sent the CAO and the mayor a current copy of our insurance that had always been enforced. State Farm had mailed the updated certificate when the policy automatically renewed, but it had not made it to the file evidently. We were evicted from the Civic Center on Friday before a weekend with two events that would bring over 3,000 people to the Civic Center. Over 1,200 of them, high school and junior high kids, all of them expecting to have food and drinks available. We had purchased over $1,000 in supplies, drinks, and food in the previous days in hopes of having enough inventory on hand to get through Saturday. This on top of the thousands of dollars of inventory and equipment we already had on site. I want to personally apologize to Cyber Innovation Center and Simple Church if their events were ruined by this action. Please know that we were fully ready and, and fully intended to help make both of your events spectacular. The worst thing I can imagine is folks thinking we simply did not show up for their event. Everyone impacted needs to know what happened and who caused it. We were terminated and immediately evicted in retribution, period, for daring to get involved in a city government action that directly impacted us and our company and thousands of other stakeholders. At least one elected official used his political position and power, likely in consult with another, to take revenge on me for speaking up on behalf of the citizens of the community who are going to be impacted by this ordinance. It was a vicious attack on my First Amendment right of freedom of speech. I believe this is a crystal-clear abuse of power, a retaliation on a private citizen and company by at least one city official. Making the attack even more heinous is the total lack of regard for the collateral damage caused and the thousands of people who had to suffer through the weekend from the malicious action. Public servants who would give no thought to brazenly attacking a private citizen who simply disagrees are very dangerous to all citizens of the community and should never be allowed to hold office or at the city job. In fact, if these officials are capable of going after me so flagrantly, I must also fear for my personal safety and further attacks in other areas. Public servants who would maliciously attack a simple concession worker and attempt to kill a local small business created specifically to offer the city a needed service because I offered my observations and expertise into the closed process is a very dangerous precedent. It is obvious that abuse of power crime has been committed, and the offenders should be held accountable to prevent further actions against me and other private citizens in the future. Additionally, any co-conspirator who went along with this personal vendetta or any who could have stopped it but didn't should face consequences as well. Mostly, I hope the citizens of Bojor City will force the responsible people to answer for their bullying. I also hope the local media will make sure these people are given the attention they deserve and help bring them to justice to prevent attacks like this from happening to other citizens. This personal attack has already cost me, my family, my company significantly and resulted in enormous stress, fear, humiliation, and suffering. My future and my company's future is now very much in question because of this. I am now being forced to live with a massive sense of doom and anguish and dread from being drawn into this situation. One private citizen up against a bunch of public officials who may all be conspiring, retribution against me for not cowering to the attack. As for my objection to the ordinance, I'm actually not completely against doing something new with the Civic Center. Never have been. I'm probably more conservative than most of you when it comes to government. I simply wanted to be involved and offer my experience and expertise to develop what I think is a much better alternative. So go ahead and pass the ordinance. I don't believe anything anyone can say here today is going to change it anyway. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Hoag. Would anyone else like to speak on this issue? It's a public hearing. Any comments from the council?
Yeah, I got, I have several. I probably won't make them all. But, you know, when somebody comes and speaks before the council, I expect them to tell the truth. I really do. That's what we do. And so what was just said is very far from the truth. The event from the robotics went on. People brought items in to eat. They were happy. Did they have everything they want? This was in effect, an attack on Mr. Hoag. I have never met Mr. Hoag except when he spoke last week. The contract, the first I heard, I asked for the contract. The contract was outdated. This was in February, so we had no contract. So that was a lapse of someone within the city, probably. Then I asked for the insurance certificate. The insurance certificate that you just said was up to date was outdated from August of last year. So you're working over there without an insurance certificate. Puts the city at liability. So you said it was up to date, so it wasn't up to date.
Mr. President, call of order, please. The man spoke, he had his chance.
Exactly.
The floor is Councilman Williams, and we will not have comments from the audience.
Please allow Councilman Williams to.
I please register that objection going forward. And if, if it persists, I would ask that that person be excused to outside the chambers.
So noted.
So it was not a personal attack. My job is to protect the city, and that's exactly what I did. When we found out the insurance was outdated, Pam went over to see Mr. Hoag. Wasn't our fault. It wasn't Pam's fault. Wasn't the mayor's fault. If you're a vendor, you need to keep up with your own insurance. That's how I feel about it. So again, if you come, come speak to us and slam us, do the truth. Don't lie. Thank you, Mr. President.
Any other comments from the council?
Mr. President, just in the future, if, if we have a public hearing, we need to make sure that those who participate stick to the subject versus stating things that are derogatory towards members of this council. The issue was the ordinance before us. And some of the comments that were made were not germane to that issue. So we need to make sure in the future that they speak to those issues and not directly or indirectly toward a member of this council. Because I'm offended that someone would accuse me of being a part of any conspiracy of any kind. And I don't, I don't like that at all.
So noted. Thank you, Councilman Darby. Any other comments from the council? Having none, this public hearing, I declare closed, and we'll move on to item number two.
Introduce an ordinance restricting access to the Bojor City Water and Sewer Facilities without prior approval from ManShack Consulting Group, Inc., first reading.
So moved. Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience?
I just want to say something on that, too. That, that needs to be strictly followed, that ordinance. So, you know, whoever's in charge of that, we need to make sure we strictly follow that.
Well, you'd like me to?
So do we, did we get a motion?
Yeah.
And a second. And that's any comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Yes.
Yeah, I just wanted to emphasize that there had been incidents in the past where ManShack's request for permission to access our water and sewer treatment facilities have been gone ignored. There have been people that have entered these restricted facilities. And incidents have occurred which could have impaired the public possibly. And it is our job and duty to protect this valuable asset of water that we provide to those within the city as well as those outside the city. So along Councilman Williams' point here, it is of the utmost importance that people throughout this city understand that this is serious business, and we're dealing with, again, a vital product that people depend on every day, so.
Thank you, Councilman Montgomery. Any other comments from the council? Hearing none, please cast your vote. So the motion carries, number three.
Introduce an ordinance to re-appropriate $65,000 from the Capital Auto Equipment Fund originally assigned in ordinance number 125 of 2019 to be placed to the Capital Other Equipment Fund to be used for the ALPR Project Extended Hardware Warranty Software and Support. First reading.
So moved. Second.
So we've got a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Any questions from the council? Council, please cast your vote. Motion carries, number four.
Introduce an ordinance to establish the Bojor City Administrative Court under the authorization and provision of Louisiana Revised Statute 13:2575. First reading.
So moved. Second.
So we have a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Any questions or comments from the council? Please cast your vote. Motion carries, number five.
Introduce an ordinance to accept the dedication into the city street system, the streets within Plantation Trace Garden Homes, Unit Number Three and Unit Number Four. First reading.
So moved. Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Any questions from the council? Please cast your vote. Motion carries, number six.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of a part-time field maintenance worker and the promotion of an existing part-time field maintenance worker to Recreation Maintenance Worker One for the Bojor Park, for North Bojor Park, for Parks and Recreation. First and final reading.
So moved. Second.
So we have a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Any questions from the council? Please cast your vote. Motion carries, number seven.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of a mechanic, too, in the garage according to the 2020 budget. First and final reading.
So moved. Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Any questions from the council? Please cast your vote. Motion carries, number eight.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of a Recreation Maintenance Worker, too, for Parks and Recreation. First and final reading.
So moved. Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Council, any questions? Please cast your vote. So the motion carries, number nine.
Approve Report of Change Order for the Sewer Sub Basin B C 10 Phase Two Project, An Increase of $62,098. an increase of $62,098.74. Total cost of contract with change order, $475,737.27.
So move.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Comments from the audience? Any questions from the council? Please cast your vote. Motion carries, number 10.
Council, one of these items, number B here, the Eastwood Stockwell Stallion Spirit, they've pulled, they've asked that one to be pulled. So it's going to be approved parade permit fee waivers for the following crew of Barkus and Meow Saturday, February 9th, 2020, and Sun City Elementary Mardi Gras Parade Friday, February 21st, 2020.
So move.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Any questions from the council? Counsel, please, well, when it comes up, now cast your vote. So that motion carries, and that concludes all of our new business. Are there any announcements from the council? Mayor, would you like to say anything?
I have nothing.
If there is no comments, then this meeting is adjourned. Thank you for coming.